And we will start with a roll call of the board, starting with Mr. Fairfield.
Fairfield.
Get it out here.
Graff here.
Smako present.
Flanagan present.
Also present are our code enforcement officer Jamie Jensen and the town planner Bernie Prebling. So we will start with the new cases before us today. So we're going to hear items four A and B together because they are related. So that is case 114-51-gr-25-var, a request by the applicant for a variance from Article Four, Section 4.1.1 for a side setback of zero where 30 feet is required on a 16.45 acre lot on Baxter Lane in the general residential zoning district. And case 114-51-gr-25 for a special exception, request by the applicant for a special exception from Article Four, Section 4.1.2 to allow a garage on a lot without a principal structure and allow access from a side that's not frontage on the same 16.45 acre lot. We're going to hear those together because there will be some overlap on the facts in those cases. So please step up and make sure that you have hit the button on the microphone so it's green so we can hear you. And why don't we start with the variance request? Is that okay?
That's fine.
All right. Yes, please proceed. Okay, so I'm just going to go through the five criteria of the variance so you can answer a couple of specific questions so that this board can make any necessary findings. So can you tell me why granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest?
The fact of all is on our property.
And can you tell me why granting the variance would be consistent with the spirit of the org? Yes, could you pass that to Mr. Fairfield so we can all? And if you just want to go on to the last?
Yes. Sorry, outside of the aisle.
Thank you. This time regarding the variance specifically, I will open public comment. If you're online, please feel free to use the raise hand feature so that we can identify you. We have a phone number that's logged in on Teams. Are you wishing to make a public comment on the variance for Baxter Lane? Seeing nobody expressing interest for the variance for Baxter Lane, I'll close public comments on that. Would the board prefer to discuss these two together? So would you like to hear the special exception before we have our deliberation? Okay, go ahead.
The comments you made placing this. That's the actual reason that back you made. Is that the hardship?
And that's the special exception? I have a question. You mentioned that you got a permit from the state because of the proximity to the waterfront. Will you, would you still require that if you had moved it further into the property?
Oh, absolutely. On the canopy that.
And while you're up there, can you show us where your, your property and your residence is? That's not you.
We own that.
Any further questions from the?
Preserver. Exhales, exhales.
Any further questions from the?
Question that I always. Sorry. The questions that I always ask her about occupancy thing is you put lately that like transparency. Say no occupancy, you mentioned that the septic you to the dis converted you. That something that eat. Accept this acceptance. I mean, down the road, that's already a different lot though. Structure on it and then somebody else were to buy it and then they'd get essentially into a lake property. It'd be fairly easy for someone to convert.
Yeah, they wouldn't need the, one of the exceptions if they made this a dwelling. They could by right make it a dwelling. They'd still need relief from setbacks if they wanted to place it where it was. But because it's a separate lot of record, they could make it a dwelling. Part of the reasons they're here is because it's an accessory structure that isn't allowed without a primary structure. So lacking that dwelling on that lot, they need relief to put a accessory structure.
All right, that's.
But because it's a 12 acre separate lot of record, it, you know, it would be a non-conforming structure at that time, but they've got relief for it. So as long as they could get a septic and well on that property, they could turn it into a dwelling.
That building has no loft. I mean, it's. We've had no intention of having anybody.
And just to answer your question, you know, a variance as granted runs with the, the life of the property. So as long as they kept within the existing confines of the variance, they could continue as long as this lot exists.
All right, cool. Thank you, Jim.
Any further questions from the board?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
You considered a lot line adjustment so you could just have it on your lot? You've considered doing that?
That room. I moved the structure right in front of the cottage and I'm.
Now, so that raises my, my second option. My, my first option was to ask you, have you considered doing a lot line adjustment so that you can create enough space to put this building on your lot where your house is?
Yes.
You've considered doing that?
Yes.
And you're not willing to do that?
No, I think it would be ugly.
What would be, in what sense?
Structure right in front of 117 Baxter Lane.
No, yeah, that's.
I didn't get it.
You don't get, yeah. So I'm looking at, you have a lot line here that measures 199 point, I don't know, looks like eight two feet that butts that property. If you were to move that lot line. Move, no, not that. The lot line, the yellow lot line, that lot line. If you were to move that lot line to put, make, put this building on that lot, you could then, you wouldn't even be in front of us. You'd have your setbacks, you'd have everything you need.
Don't understand where you want me to move this lot line.
Any way you want to accommodate this building with the setbacks.
And then I'm going to pay for. This property will now be 0.3 acres. It'll be 0.3 acres plus whatever.
Well, you want to put a structure with a zero lot line. So if it's a zero setback, if you have a zero setback, you may as well have it on that lot, is my point. You have the land to do it. You own both lots, or you own three of them actually.
Yes.
So why not just create space for that structure?
Because the value of my assessment will go up.
As they do when you build a building.
And to be clear.
Why do I want to pay more taxes? I've already paid 12,000.
Yeah, so am I. Yeah, I know.
That's not even, you can't even live in that year round. It's not winter.
To be clear, your assessment will go up on the 12 acre lot as an approved lot, so.
Correct.
If that was in current use, it'd probably be, you know, it would have an impact.
If I'm going to put, I will pay more taxes. I don't have any trouble with that. I don't want to move this whole lot line here.
You can move it in any configuration you want. You don't have to move with the, the whole line. You could jog it out to go around your proposed garage and make sure that you meet the setback requirements on all sides. You could do that because there's no setback from the road required, right?
Correct, no.
Right, okay. So you could be zero there and then you could get your 30 feet, do the building, do 30 more feet.
Well, then I'm tearing up more, more trees and brush here.
But I don't believe, that's a hardship, cutting trees. I mean, it's clearing, I disagree.
Okay, well then the state would agree with me.
Okay, I, I don't, I, I don't have an opinion on, on state law for the 200. I know the state controls 250 feet back from the water, but you're allowed to build up to 100 feet from the water, so. But we're not here to address state regulations to this board. We don't have any purview over that. So my point is simply that, is that you own enough land where you can put this structure up, have a setback to meet the, the zoning requirements on your own land. If you do a lot line adjustment, that's one way of doing it. Another way of doing it is you could put it on the, the lot you're on, where your house is, and request setbacks from one side or the other for. That's what, 75 feet wide you have there?
I won't have 30 feet.
No, you won't. You would have to, you'd have, you'd be back in front of us for, for a variance. And we, and we would look at that and say, well, does that make sense? And, and other people in your neighborhood do have structures that are not meeting the setback. So for me on this board, I would consider it a reasonable request to put, to ask for relief from a sideline on your existing lot and not, not ask for three waivers or variances for, to put it on a totally different lot. It has no residential structure. You want the zero, the zero setback, which with 16 acres is just, it's hard to, for me to, to understand why you would even. I mean, cutting trees is, that's part of construction. That's what you do. Okay, so. All right, all right, that's fine. I just don't agree with it.
Okay.
Any further questions from the board on the variance? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion regarding.
I, I, I just want to make sure you understood what Paul was saying because I feel that perhaps you weren't when he's talking about the lot line adjustment. Because you could, you could jog, you can, you could put it where you feel you want to put it attractively.
Yes.
Correct? And then you could simply extend, put it there and extend your lot line 30 feet from the other side of it. So you could just jog out the space where that was going to go. So it could be very small. It wouldn't make a significant.
Well, that's basically what we're. Basically.
Yes, I understand that, but to his point, you could do it with a lot line adjustment and then not have to get.
What's, what's the positive for me to do the jogging?
You would meet, you would meet the zoning regulations.
How do I go do, how do I go and do in that?
You hire a surveyor.
You get a surveyor and you bubble the.
I just spent $1,800 last September to survey all this.
Okay, so you have a surveyor, then you would bubble out. Instead of having a dead straight lot line, you would then go and bubble around this new proposed structure at the appropriate distance from it all the way around and you only need, would need to come back to us for one variance and not three. I, I, I just hope you understand our point of view.
I, I do, but I.
As volunteers for the town, as volunteers for the town, our obligation is to the town, not to whether your property taxes go up, all due respect. So by moving that, that, that lot line, then instead of three variances, it reduces to one, which is our objective is to reduce the number of variances and to keep consistency across all lots, all people, all property in the town, based on the ordinances we have in front of us.
I can tell that Mr. Jensen has a comment.
I, I just want to make one comment about the, the property in general. The applicant has stated his interest in protecting the, the water body, but I, I don't understand why he would put it in the protected shoreline at all if that was his goal. And to maintain that 16 acre property, why would you put it so close to the water where potential fertilizers and all other impacts so close to the water would be almost guaranteed? And, you know, you cut the canopy you didn't want to do, or you could have not on 16 other acres. I guess is, is kind of the, the big question, you know, on that piece.
How about you put a structure out in the middle of nowhere?
Because you, you claim you're doing agriculture on the 16 acres, not on a 0.36 acres, I guess, is why it's.
It's just convenient and safety to have the structure right next to the property.
In the protected shoreline.
Yeah, instead of in the middle of the vehicle.
Are you going to be storing vehicles? You intend to store? So it's a garage. With, with agricultural storage, it's a garage.
Both, both issues.
Okay.
If there are no further comments from the board, I would entertain a motion on the variance specifically.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion. We deny the variance. I don't see the hardship here. There's several ways to get around the zero lot line.
Do I have a second? Are you going to go through the criteria? Paul is.
I'm not.
Do I have a second to Paul's motion?
If I don't have to go through the five criteria.
Yeah, I, I.
You're, you've made a finding as to, you know, as to number five.
Correct. My reason is that without going through the five criteria, there, there is no justification for zero lot line relief to put that structure there when you own 16 acres. And there's just quickly two ways around this, lot line adjustment or put it somewhere else on the other 16 acres and meet the setbacks.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, you have a second.
Okay, then a roll call, starting with Mr. Fairfield.
Fairfield, deny.
So that, so if you're voting in favor of the.
Favor of the denial, then it's an aye. Okay, Fairfield, aye.
You blew a aye.
Graff, nay.
Smako, nay.
Flanagan, aye.
Okay, so the motion passes. So given the fact that your request for the variance has been denied by this board, do you want to continue with your special exception because your special exception was dependent upon your variance?
Let me understand. The only way I'm going to get that variant would be able to build this structure is redo the lot line. Have a surveyor come out.
Or to put it.
I'm not going to put another part of the property.
Then yes.
That doesn't make any sense to me. This doesn't make any sense to me. But go get a surveyor and survey out my square footage of the building and make, and then come back to this board.
Wouldn't have to come back to this board. If you, if you were to survey it out, you wouldn't need a variance at all.
You can, you can.
You wouldn't meet the setback requirements. You wouldn't need a variance for that portion of what you're asking.
I don't think the other two would be.
Or a special exception, yeah. You can talk to Mr. Jensen in the, or you can talk to the land use office about, you know, how to, how to pursue that. All right, we're going to move on now to the tabled item, case 250-75. Oh, here's your, your document that you brought in. Case 250-75-RC-25 for a variance of, for the owner of Beauty Hill LLC, a request by the applicant for a variance from Article Four, Section 4.2.1 and 4.2.3 to construct a 10,000 square foot commercial building with eight residential units on the second floor while keeping the existing single family home on site for nine residential units where three would otherwise be permitted at 22 Beauty Hill Road. Now, this has been a tabled item that was previously continued. And so given the fact that we have had some changes since this was originally brought, I would just like to give code enforcement the opportunity to give us any updates that we need.
I don't know if anything's changed. The update would be, and I, and I apologize if this was miscommunicated by anybody in my office. The mixed use structure is allowed in that zone. So the, the variance language was about 4.2, which would have been lot size for residential structures. With a mixed use structure, the existing residential can be part of that mixed use structure. So I don't know as though relief is needed for that building based on that section of zoning.
Okay, is it, is it your office's opinion that any relief is needed from this board?
I, I wasn't entirely clear of what the proposal was to see if there was other issues based on the design, size, et cetera. But our zoning does allow for mixed use structures and those to be combined with existing residential dwellings. And then the, the, the unit number would, would coordinate with septic design loading. So if the piece of property could support the residential above, then that number is dictated by that. So I don't know if the 10 would be a number versus seven or 15 could potentially be depending on the loading of that piece of property.
So have you, have you seen the, the application?
No.
Okay, so with the relief they're requesting from Section 4.2.1, is it your office's opinion now that we, that the relief requested here today is not needed to proceed with this project?
If my understanding is correct, and Mr. Berry wants to add.
Yes, absolutely.
Before a formal opinion is rendered on the record.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like a moment to discuss this with the board.
Yes, and we will, we will give that. I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Jensen, if he had any updates, since this has been trailing for a while. But yes, you have the floor, Mr. Berry.
Actually, before he does that, I do want to disclose that my son does work for Berry Surveying and Engineering. I do not think it has any interference whatsoever with this, with the case that we are looking at. I have no familiarity with it, but if anyone does object to that, I want to put it out there.
Do we have anybody online or in the meeting room that objects to Ms. Flanagan continuing to hear this case? Being none, you may proceed.
So I hate to disagree with Mr. Jensen. So we're asking for a variance for 421 to permit a higher density. Because we're in the RC zone, the RC density, by my reading of the ordinance, defaults to what is permitted in the NR zone and the GR zone, which is now three acres per unit. In the TC zone, it is different. In the TC zone, there is no maximum number of units that is permitted in a mixed use building. The only maximum prescribed is per the NHDES standard. So unfortunately, the ordinance defines the mixed use buildings in two separate ways, one being in the RC zone and one being in the TC zone. I am involved in other projects in town, which Jamie and I have had multiple, multiple conversations about where that is the case. The number of units in the building doesn't matter because the entire building is considered a commercial structure. And in the TC zone, it specifically says density is driven by the NHDES standards. But in the RC zone, my reading of it, and I'm happy to be wrong, my reading of it is that it defaults to the NR zone and GR zone.
Okay, Mr. Jensen.
I appreciate the caution. So Town Center does not allow residential structures on the ground at all unless they're part of a PUD. So if, that one piece that you couldn't do so there wouldn't be any density for a single family structure in Town Center because it only has to be part of a PUD, so it would then go into a different section. If you look at the table of uses, if you look at. If you look at the table of uses, if you look at mixed use, it's under commercial. It's not under the residential uses. So mixed use, the building that I believe Mr. Berry is proposing, is not a residential structure. A residential structure would be a townhouse, a single-family attached, single-family detached duplex-style housing. Uh, a mixed-use structure falls under commercial, and if you go to, um, the definitions, it would contemplate businesses on the first floor and residents on the top. And it's always been calculated in my time here as, uh, septic loading density, even though it's not articulated in every zone that way, uh, that's been the way it's, it's been looked at, um, before.
Follow-up question?
Sure.
So, Jamie, does that mean that if we were proposing just purely residential structures and we were five hundred feet from the road, then the residential density would be calculated based on NR and GR underlying zoning standards?
Correct.
Is that where that falls?
Correct. And, and just like the building next door, for example, because it's in, within that five hundred feet, you can't have residential structures, but the mixed use is allowed, um, similarly. Because I gotta look at, what zone is this? I do believe that it was discussed to change, but it never did, um, and that may be, you know, why. There was some confusion if we talked about this previously and it slipped my mind, or I gave bad information. I apologize. I don't know if I led you down the wrong path.
My only follow-up question is, I'll be able to receive this opinion in writing?
Pardon me?
Will I be able to receive this opinion in writing?
I would hap- hap- happy to give you that opinion in writing.
Okay.
I was gonna say, you have two options. You know, you can accept what code enforcement is saying as to the current status of what you would require, uh, because it seems that, you know, we listen to code enforcement, but your presentation, uh, is indicating a different interpretation of the law. If it comes down to a legal interpretation issue, we would need to, be, you'd be welcome to make your presentation, and then we would need to consult with counsel, or you can accept Mr. Jensen's offer of putting that in writing.
So, yeah, I mean, so Jamie's opinion in writing is a, um, what do you call that, Jamie? Sorry. It's, it's essentially a zoning opinion. Um, if I didn't agree with him, what, what was it?
It's a zoning determination.
It's a zoning determination. There's a technical word for that, but, um, if I didn't agree with him, I would actually have to appeal that decision to the board, and so I would only be appealing that decision to then come and ask you for a variance, which, uh, doesn't seem worthy.
Sure, sure. So, um, would it be your preference to accept what he's offering?
Yeah, if that, um, if, if that's the opinion and we can receive that in writing, so that we can move on to the planning board, uh, we're happy to do that.
Okay, then are you withdrawing this application?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to review an approval of the minutes from the July sixteenth meeting.
Um, I, well, I guess I can wait till other, I, I...
Is it related to the minutes or, or other business?
Probably other business. It's kind of administrative regarding the first case that we had.
Okay, um...
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes, though. Then we can go on.
Yeah, let's, let's deal with the minutes, and then, um, so does anybody have any revisions to the minutes? If not, does anybody have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted?
I just did make a motion to approve the minutes.
Uh, I will second your motion, so roll call vote, starting with Mr. Fairfield.
Fairfield abstained.
Oh, you weren't present, okay.
Debito, aye.
Graft, aye.
Samaco, aye.
Flanagan, aye.
Okay, all right, so now we're moving on to other business. Uh, I know that you have something, uh, but do the land use office members have any, any business or anything they want to share with the board?
The only thing I would say, probably everyone knows that at this time, the twenty-first of September, doesn't have anything to do with zoning, but the Town Center, it's gonna be, uh, the twenty-first, the Town Center, uh, where there's gonna be a program where we talk about... I'll start over. There'll be a program, uh, in the Town Center. Uh, it'll start at the elementary school at ten in the morning and go till noon. It'll be questions and answers and, and talking about the vision and what's happened up to this point. Um, and then after that, uh, there'll be a walking tour, and there'll be a band, and there will be activities. They'll be naming the, the road that the kids came up with, I guess Welcome Way. So i- i- it should be a good time, and I'm hoping that people consider going, because, uh, may give you a hint of what could actually happen out there. So, um, I just wanted to let you know about that, that's on the twenty-first, which is a Sunday. It starts at ten in the morning at the elementary school.
That's terrific. I'll be there.
I will also be there. Uh, Ms. Flanagan?
Um, so it's sort of an administrative thing. I had asked them prior to the meeting, starting on the first, um, application that we had received, they had talked about the variance, and then they put an arrow to, um, what it was referencing in our zone, uh, for the zoning. And then when they went down to the special exception, they made a reference to A, four dot one dot two, but B was, does not fall under that. So it would be very helpful to have, if there, if we actually had a proper reference to what they were looking for the special exception from. And what would make it even easier is if there's a way to just, um, in the packet, not that I can't pull out my book and look, but sometimes if you just make a photocopy of what it's referencing for, for, for us to take a look at quickly, and then we can get into, into more detail, that would be helpful, because I could not find whatever B was in there.
I couldn't find it either.
I apologize. Um, yeah, working on some of these, with the way our zoning is written, um, with references in tables and definitions, it sometimes gets messy, um, for lack of a better term, and, and finding the best way to articulate that. And, um, I don't know if that was just a typo, that it was supposed to be four dot one, table two, and that would have been the setback table. So that might have been the confusion and mistake that was, um, for, you know...
Well, it's referencing putting, allowing an accessory use on, uh, a lot with no principal structure.
Okay.
And I, so that's something completely different. And so it's confusing for you guys. We're volunteers that do not live our lives looking at zoning codes. So I spent a lot of time trying to figure, figure all this out and trying to figure out where I needed to look.
I mean, you referenced it. You know where the reference is?
Well, it, again, um, i- i- if you go to, um, yeah, if you go to, and, and some of this is historical, uh, administration. So my predecessor administrated zoning in a certain way, and I followed suit, and some things I've changed course on, other things I've continued to administer the same way, um, seeing his justification or court cases, et cetera. Um, so with this particular one, it's another one of those definitions, um, and, uh, table of uses problems, where if you go into the table of uses and it says accessory, under accessory, private garages, they're permitted in all zones, but they're accessory. So if you go to the definition of accessory structure, um, it, it, it contemplates that there's a primary structure. One of the confusing ones is the recreational thing that doesn't say it that way, but then when you go to the recreational use, it does say can be used as a primary or secondary structure for a hundred and eighty days. So some of it's written oddly that we gotta jump around. Um, some corrections, you know, are certainly, uh, needed, and they, they don't always get in there. Sometimes they're hard to articulate and find a better way to do it, and they just keep, push down the road. But, um, you know, accessory use under definition is a structural use that is subordinate in purpose to the principal use. So without a principal use, you know, it's my understanding. Another one of those, um, funny areas, if you will, is accessory dwelling units. Those are under residential use. They should probably be under accessory use, because you can't have an accessory dwelling unit without a primary dwelling unit. You know, so there's some funny things in zoning that, you know, you just take what historically has been, um, the way it's been done, and saying, no, we don't allow, you know, accessory use is, unless it's a primary use. Um, and there's not always a, a, a great way to articulate it on paper or point to an exact section without, you know, the connecting the dots. Just like the mixed-use one. I mean, that's a, a, a confusing one that I, I think we've sat down and talked a couple times about.
I get that, but then how, it's very hard to make a judgment for people who feel passionate about something if we're, can't be super clear about what it means about...
I agree.
Adding something there. So again, for me, it would be helpful, you know, i- if you can be as clear as possible, if there's a way to actually, you know, put the, highlight something to make it a little bit easier to first reference and know where to reference it, and then if it's saying that this is not in writing, it's just the way it's been, which seems a little...
Yeah, it seems like you're just saying you have to use inference to make that conclusion by reading between the lines of this stuff. It should be explicit somewhere.
Uh, well, it, yes, and, um, yes and no. It would be ideal if it was explicit, but there's, tends to be gray areas, and so, uh...
It's not a gray area. It sounds like a pretty foundational sort of thing. You can't build a structure.
Right, but it's there if you jump back and forth from section to section. I mean, like, I'll use, for example, the code books. If you read one section of code book and stop, most likely you're wrong. Um, there's seven other sections you need to flip to and check the information, because there's exceptions, circumstances, and, and different criteria that may come into play if this, than that. So it, it's, it's not ideal, and I certainly didn't write zoning from the start. You know, all of us are, are handed this document and each year, um, with input from both boards. In the public, we try to update it and improve it, and hopefully we do, but some things don't get voted in. Um, for example, um, the Baxter Lane right-of-way setback. Previously, there would have been a setback from Baxter Lane, but because of a, uh, petition zoning article from a resident, they took, they modified the definition of a street, so that, because it's a right-of-way, is no longer a street. So now that, because it messes up the definition of street in setbacks, so that no longer has a setback, because it's not a street by the new definition, it's a right-of-way. So now you could, before, we always told people they had to have a setback from the right-of-way, because that's how it was written. And now you could build, you could technically build right on the edge of that right-of-way. Um, you, you know, and, and cause problems for traffic or whatever, but, you know, so we gotta do what's written and try to, you know, make... In instances where it's not clear, we have to make the decision, and that's my job as zoning administrator, to make that decision, wrong or right, then see the process through. If, if it's decided to be wrong or someone disagrees with it, come to this board and see what you guys think, and if, you know, the next step in the process. So it's not always the option to be perfect. I wish it was, um, you know.
I mean, spending a lot of time in ordinances and in codes, just because of my work, um, I have no idea when zoning started in Barrington.
Nineteen seventy...
So from nothing?
Yeah.
You can do whatever you want to, more and more documented, and then when it comes to, you know, the town has to vote on major changes, and so imagine there's five major changes and they all link together somehow, and they only accept three. So now all of a sudden, you're referencing changes that didn't actually enacted, and it becomes almost like a word salad.
And then complying with state law as well, you know, you add nuance. And, and I don't like to make excuses to give, you know, a background. This application was dropped to my desk for a garage. That's it. I said, I, it was...
That's why you see the arrows and everything.
But, you know, but that doesn't excuse us not giving you supporting documents, and I apologize. We can, we can do better.
I do think that this particular situation where you have, kind of, where you're having to read between the lines and link up different sections and different codes, that might be a place for one of your memos.
Right.
Would be useful just to see the thought process, because, you know, you have to make these calls on a daily basis, based on your knowledge of case law and ordinances. So, uh, that might be one situation where just to follow the logic, it would help us, since it's multiple things, using definitions and lack of definition to kind of create a decision, so.
And I, and I always question, um, when an applicant comes in and fills out a form, and we try to guide them to be as detailed or specific, but, um, on that application, his frontage was, was Beauty Hill Road. That's where he should take access from. And I tried to explain to him that that's where he needs to come in from, and he, he didn't even, he didn't want to ask for relief from access from that,
Understood.
Um, which would have been another one, you know. So sometimes the applicants can cause issues and, and fill out things. But again, doesn't excuse us not giving you accurate information, and we can do better.
I gotta have a question, maybe turns into a comment. So if one of the board members votes no to reject an application like I did tonight, my reason was, there was no hardship, zero. I don't have to go through the whole five criteria.
No, because you clarified on the record.
He has to meet just one, or miss just one, and, and that's it. So I don't have to go through the whole, you meet this, you don't meet that.
Well, then why do we have to go through all five when we're approving it?
Because they have to meet them all. But if one fails, the whole thing fails.
If one fails, they all fail. So that's why I said, no, I won't read the whole thing, because I would be saying, oh, let's see, you do meet this, you don't meet that. So I didn't, I didn't really...
I just wanted clarification, because really, it wasn't until you got into a second time round that you made it...
Yeah, I, I suppose I, I could have and probably should have summarized my reason for it, but in explaining the whole, my, my intentions, and, and how he had two ways out of this without even coming before us.
And like you articulated, that small lot has a reason. That, that size of that lot is the, the, the exception. But a sixteen-acre piece lacks uniqueness for that first criteria. What's unique about this lot?
And that's why we take each one as a new case. But at this time, I think, you know, we've sort of reached the end of that. I would entertain a motion to adjourn if nobody else has any additional business.
Graft moves to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, starting with Mr. Fairfield?
Fairfield, aye.
Debito, aye.
Graft, aye.
Samaco, aye.